Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we got the agenda presented.
A second.
Counsel people, is that, you guys had talked about earlier, wanted to modify it a little bit, is that correct? Some items you did want to take up tonight.
Yeah.
We were going to table something under office.
Right, so I think what you need to do, if you're planning on doing that, is you need to go ahead and the agenda first before you adopt.
I move we can't be a general.
And then you set more particulars how you want to amend it.
To table items under old business, E, G, and H. Because I think we need more discussion of the whole concept here in order to deal with those 54 items.
And counsel, was though you also, I think, wanted to table the executive session, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Without the full council president?
Did you tell me that?
Yeah.
You're blowing my brain now.
Yes.
So you all have all those tables needs.
Motion made in second, in favor? Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
As amended.
As amended. As amended.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Consent agenda, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Um, I move we approve consent agenda.
Motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, guest speaker's communication informational items. Do you, counsel, you should have a packet? On request for proposal of audit services for the town of Lakeview.
So we just wanted to let the council know that we had, myself and Mr. Anderson's office have kind of worked this together so we can get an auditor as, um, this was the last year that, um, Wyssen Company was going to perform our audit this last fiscal year, so we've got the fiscal year up that just ended, um, that we need an auditor with under state law, so this is the schedule we're going to do. We're going to be sending to everybody under the, um, that's licensed to do these audits, just that everybody has a chance. I imagine we will probably end up with, who has gotten all, usually one firm ends up, or smaller areas, it's a sucky empty debt, so we probably end up with the same one as the county and school district have, but everybody deserves a chance under public contract a lot to build a bid on it, so I doubt we're going to have a lot of responses, but we're going to send one out to everybody just to make sure that all firms in the state have a chance of doing that. Except for Wyssen Company who performed this, they are no longer doing those, or at least the local, um, our local CPA is no longer doing the tax constraints.
So this will be starting next June?
This is actually for the year that just finished. Fiscal year that just finished, eighteen nineteen. June of, July of eighteen to June nineteen. So this is just for the council's informational purposes.
The RFP is written.
Pardon me?
The RFP is written for a two-year contract with the auditor.
Yeah, I did read through.
And then they, you, at the discretion of the council, you can extend it another two years.
It's also written so that if we may have what's called a single source audit become necessary, if we end up with federal funding through any of the projects that we're looking forward to doing, and so that would obviously change the price. We're not going to lock somebody in because that is a more complicated audit, more time and whatever, and it's not fair to lock somebody in. So if, we're not sure when, with the USDA grant we're applying for, what fiscal year that would come in, so that could be sometime this fiscal year, sometime next fiscal year, it's really hard to know which, um, time falls in, so at that point, if that did come, become necessary, we can try to renegotiate the price. Some may do it for a flat rate, generally you can say it's a lot more work, so pay people what they do for you. So that'll be the kind of plan, but we've got a good relationship with somebody, that would likely be the person we want to do it with. But again, we don't want to sandbag somebody with getting them to think that they're doing one thing and then end up with a complicated process.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Let's move on down to department reports, nine one one, Scott? Not here, okay. Dennis, fire department?
I have nothing further, unless you have questions.
Okay. Public Works, Jeff?
I don't really have anything to add to my report. We're running a well right now that we drilled a long time ago, about eleven years ago, and we finally got it up and running in the middle of this past month, and it's been running continuously for months now, and it's the lowest in iron and manganese of any of our wells, so we're running about eighty percent well water now compared to the spring line, so I think the good water is holding out a little longer due to the fact we're not using some of our higher in iron and manganese wells right now.
Is that the one that we talked about, the pump one?
Yes.
That's pump nine?
Pump nine.
Yeah. Engineer Darrell Anderson, you got the floor.
Uh, the Catimus paving project is being advertised this week, that pays that Catimus lane, um, down south of town where the Red Rock project is. That'll be used, those air quality, uh, cement funds will be used for that. Uh, we'll convert it on the tenth, tenth of September.
Okay, will it be open here, Darrell, or will it be forwarded to the other?
Here. Yes, town hall.
And isn't that also incorporate some sewer extension for sure for utilities out that direction as well?
No, that is completed.
That's completed.
The sewer water extensions are completed, they'd be winding up that contract, um, the finality out, um, which is ready to be filed out. Also, we, we're going to leave that funding open, if you remember, those funds through the IFA, so we can add the cooling water from the sewage ponds to Red Rock. And we have a call, DQ, on Thursday morning to pull over that project. Once we get that ironed out, we'll have to have additional agreement with Red Rock on those loan requirements.
Because right now, Red Rock, we are taking, but Red Rock is currently obligated to pay anything other than the state funding, and then a portion of that funding as well is also, um, agreement is also forgiven as a grant, as long as a certain number of jobs are created. So right now, Red Rock is contractually bound to pay both of those backs. We'll need to extend that agreement if we decide to go use uses of wastewater. But honestly, I think talking with Darrell is probably the best way of doing it, because if we were going to have way more, having them use just regular water, it was going to be probably a pretty large strain on our current sewer lines.
We know Conoct did that in Chaslake City, I don't know if you've seen that project or not, Conoct did that quite a few years ago with the ventilation plant, and, um, Chaslake Cities, they ran, and I just found this out recently, and they ran the same issue. Their, their waters just could not handle it, so they were going to need to pull the plug on it, and so they're doing the exact same thing there.
And just from a legal standpoint, DQ prefers already contaminated water to be used in this, so they're really, because it's conservation based, so you've got a much better chance of getting it approved, getting it, getting it, that part of the permitting process approved, and you're doing it this way versus more water going out, because obviously you're using more of the resource. There is a little bit of loss, I think, but not a lot, correct?
Well, it's, 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 this way they could use all the water we want, they want, and it doesn't have any bad ones. We could supply the water, the problem was the return water out of their cooling system.
What to do with it?
We couldn't handle it in the, in the lagoon system. We could if we enlarged the lagoon system, but it's much cheaper for them to use the water straight out.
And much better chance of regulatory approval at that point.
Yeah, it's a better idea if we could.
Okay. Anything else? Ah, back to Jeff and Darrell.
You know, town manager stuff, uh, at the last meeting, one of the gallery mentioned the condition of the flag on the hill up there. So I reached out to, uh, the VFW, and they're, I've never been directly involved with taking care of that flag, but a couple of their members were on the Yellow Ribbon Committee, and so I reached out to those two members, and there is a fund that's still active at one of the local banks, and there is still money in it, so I asked their quartermaster to step up and order a couple of flags out of that fund, and they agreed to do that, so we shouldn't have a flag right away, but the VFW does not want to be involved, and the two people that are left from the Yellow Ribbon Committee are no longer willing to take care of it and do the physical part of it, so I don't really, I hate to volunteer for everything that comes along, but I think it's going to fall on Public Works. I'll talk to the Public Works Director and...
I think the Public Works Director is a good idea for Public Works to do it, because it's very, it's very nice to have it up there.
So there's probably enough funds to take care of the flag for another four years. So it won't be a financial burden, but just some more time like everything else, so we'll have to have a meeting and create a...
Create?
No.
We don't need another committee.
We'll probably have to make a motion and run through a meeting to agree to do so, but I just don't see, unless we're going to start another Yellow Ribbon Committee, and then it'll disband, we'll have to take it over anyway, so, uh...
Well, I'll go into my plan and see if you can help with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll come, I'll help you with it.
All right, so we'll have flags probably the end of this week or the first part of next week, so.
All right, give me all our...
It's got flags in the big, so it's pretty easy for us.
Well, it's going to need plenty of people, they'll, and, um, okay, you got anything else, Jeff?
No, we, we met over at the fire hall this morning, just, uh, kind of get a feel for how their time cards, Darrell and I and Carmen, how their time cards work and how their scheduling is being done, and it was a pretty productive meeting, and, uh, so, really nothing, no details right at this time, but, uh, we're making progress on that, but...
Okay, yeah. Okay, moving on, we'll go through old business, which is the reimbursement requested funds. Um, we've already, we've discussed this, if we were going to go ahead and do that, am I correct? To reimburse those.
The ones that are being tabled.
Except for the ones being tabled.
With E, G, and A, or E and G.
So I need a motion on the, for the Lake County Roundup?
Can we do that in one?
I think you can, I think you would just do a motion to approve items, A, reimbursement requests, items A, B, C, D, and F.
I move we vote to approve reimbursement in the amount of one thousand dollars each to items A, Lake County Roundup, B, Lake, Juniper RV Resort, C, Julia's Restaurant, and, uh, F...
D.
D, Alger Theater, and F, Fremont Highlander Skateboard.
A second?
Motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now, let's move on to new business.
Hang on, Darrell, I've got something.
Pardon?
Darrell, I've got something.
Yeah?
We have the financials to look at too, you want to do those under reports, or you want to wait till the end of the meeting?
Do you want to do that now, or you want to do it?
At your discretion. Yes, yeah, go ahead and finish, we're going to do this at the end of the meeting.
Okay, you know, let's go ahead and do the new business?
Sure.
All right, first thing under new business, handicap parking at Burger Queen, and from what I see here, I really don't see a problem with it. Putting it out there in the street?
Is that what the question is basically, is they want to put it out there in the street?
The samples asked about this, uh, quite some time ago, as they did the remodel, um, since the fire destroyed the restaurant. And I didn't, it takes council approval, I didn't get it here for a while, so that's my apology. Uh, and the time we got it out here and got working with the agenda, we're a little bit late. A handicap spot is required for the Burger Queen as required by the Billy Coats when they remodeled. Uh, the trouble with trying to fit it in here is these, these parking spaces are substandard, and these are substandard according to our development code, there's, I highlighted out the, so if we, if we tried to move it in here, um, you know, to have a ban accessible site, we would lose probably four spaces. There's only so many parking spaces uptown, period, um, if we lose these four, uh, that's going to create more congestion in the square, so we suggested one here, where we'd only lose one on Street Park.
So we'll only lose one overall?
Yeah, there's only one there now.
Okay.
We can, we can extend this and make this work, there's a curb cut here now, because there used to be a sliding door into this, uh, part of the building. That's not there anymore, um, so we're not, we're not blocking any access to the building.
Is there a curb cut already where they had laid out this?
There's a curb cut there already, um, I think we, I think we showed it. I thought we have it here. Yeah, you can kind of see it, it's, so...
If you have good eyes.
I can't see it right there, like, right there.
Yeah, it's there, it's there.
So that was the samples as a class.
I see no problem with that, I mean, that's all, you can make a motion, go ahead.
Make a motion that we approve the handicap park at Burger Queen?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jeff? All right, next on the, on the, uh, under new business is the, same as every year, request for the street closure for the one hundred year Roundup Parade?
Well, I don't think we're going to do that yet.
We don't need road closures from teens?
Might get beat to that. You want to make a motion?
I, I will, we approve the Lake County Chamber's request for street closures for the one hundred year Roundup Parade.
A second?
Okay, motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I have nothing to update, do you?
Um, no, I don't, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Darrell, we'll take it back to you now.
Okay, as requested, we, uh, we worked with Tana and, uh, actually, actually Carmen's done all of it. We've got some financials for you, some reports, and we picked a few, we picked a few accounts to go over, and, um, you can decide on what you want for monthly reports, uh, we pretty much got down how we can, uh, print out pretty much anything you want, so Carmen has a few things you can go over here, they're in your packet, and we'll have them up on the screen too.
Yeah, that, first page, that account summary line is just, um, kind of showing some of the balances, and it's as of June thirtieth, so the end of the last fiscal year, in some of the cash accounts. So the ones I highlighted, I think, are the, the main checking accounts, and then that, um, government pool account.
These were balances as of June three.
So like that Washington Federal one, the second highlighted one, that's, um, I think your main, uh, checking account, the town's main account that they process things through, so you have, it's showing June thirtieth, six hundred and fourteen thousand there. And I did look at some of the bank reconciliations, um, the, didn't have the June thirtieth ones, um, yet, but I looked at the main ones, and that, that number appears to be usable, given the bank balances. Um, the Cassell that provides the software performs the reconciliation reports for the town.
We're going to try to have a conference call with Cassell, um, some of the bank statements haven't been sent to them yet. I don't know, anyway, we'll, we'll get there. Down at the bottom, uh, you see the total is at two hundred and ten, um, there've been more cash allocated somewhere probably in the last year's budget, it's more than, uh, cash that we received, so that's a difference. That doesn't mean we expanded it. Just it was being allocated somewhere.
Yeah, that very top line on there is the cash allocated to other funds amount, and I'm assuming that the system is calculating that and grabbing it off of based on what was entered for budget figures for that fiscal year, so that would be why there's a difference there.
And Darrell, are we correct in assuming that some of those carryovers sometimes are, because there's some things that even the fiscal year stops, there's some things are still due payable because bills came in in June, so some of that, just, just because the fiscal year stopped doesn't mean that the bills occurred from that fiscal year haven't still been paid, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and when you, anytime you run any of these reports, you know, you're looking at a range, and so depending on how that range falls, you'll be looking at fiscal year versus calendar year, exactly there's some difference there. And then after that sheet, um, it's just a few of the funds. It's a, um, revenue compared to budget, actual compared to budget for the funds. Uh, the first couple pages on that general fund one are going to be the revenue amount, and then the next couple of pages are going to be the expense.
Which one are you on?
General.
Uh, general fund.
I'm going to hold the right one.
Yeah, it's just called general fund. So it has, and it has, that first column is the period actual, the second column is the year to date actual, since the report was ran for the entire fiscal year period, those two are exactly the same. And then that third column is what the budget was for those account items, and then there's a, a difference.
The last column is the percentage.
Yeah, the percentage of the budget used, so if it's more than a hundred, you used over, if it's less, you were under, if it's in the amount. This is kind of a standard financial statement form that the system will print out. There's a lot of other report options too, there's a lot of options, so it just depends on what kind of things you want to see, which is Carmen's third one for you.
We're pretty good on the two here.
Yeah. There are a few of the funds that are smaller, so they show up on, you know, just on the P P's.
Wasn't there a percentage of what was done for last year?
For expenditures?
Yeah.
Two hundred expenditures.
So eighty-seven percent, if you look on that third page, down towards the bottom, eighty-seven percent of the budget was expended last year.
In the general fund?
In the general fund.
What page do you?
It's the...
It's on page, it says page ten.
It says page ten.
On the right. We should have made it so the whole thing showed up on the screen, because we should be considered... You see down there on the left, second to the left column?
So eighty-seven point seven percent of what we actually used on the total budget for last year?
Yeah, in the general fund.
Have the VA's had a chance to look at the year's budget at all?
This year's budget? Yeah, we went through this year's budget, um, you know, if you noticed, if you notice on the budget, there wasn't any things that were left on last year's used, you know, that two days, some of the things we've noticed when we went through, there, there wasn't enough, some items should have been increased, and they, they weren't. One of them is the, which we have a, we have an account to pull up here, and then one of them was the nine one one, you know, the payroll on that, that one should have been increased, um, so we were talking about what to do about that, we could do some supplemental budgets, or, um, I don't know, that's something we could, maybe we just got to do, yeah? Yeah.
But I think there's a few items in that budget that needed to be increased at once, and I think there's some stuff that was decreased that shouldn't have been increased.
I think it would be helpful to put together a spreadsheet and to take your actual numbers from the previous year and the year before, and take some actuals and have those there, and then look at what's proposed in the new budget.
I think that'd be great, that was something we decided to get done prior to approving that budget, it was three years of actuals to be able to understand what we were at.
And we have this year's now, or, excuse me, we have last year's, and then we have the audit figures now from the year before.
So we should be able to get three.
We should, we should be able to get three years of that accounting.
That, that would be good to see all together in one spot.
And that way you're not having to adopt multiple serial supplemental budgets, you can just hopefully do it once and done.
My, Jeff and I talked about some stuff that was supposed to be allocated for Public Works that they really need, but afraid to pull the trigger on it, because we're not sure we stand for that budget. That one?
Yeah?
That one's on page?
Well, it's actually two pages, but, well, if the system doesn't put the revenues and expenditures on the same...
I have a question here, I don't know if it's a misprint or what, but on nineteen forty-four thirty-two equipment maintenance?
Is your, what page are you on?
It's on page sixteen. I don't understand budgeting five hundred dollars for, for, uh, equipment maintenance, and I know it's a lot more than that.
No, this is last year's budget, this is one issue.
And, I mean, some of those budgets for the maintenance, it depends on where it's at, because if you remember correctly, Stan was doing...
Well, they're in the nine one one.
Yes, Dan was doing maintenance on all vehicles.
Right, but...
Yeah, this, I assume that this equipment maintenance in the nine one one fund would be for maintenance on their systems, their computers, the things that dispatch.
I think they did a huge upgrade on it, didn't they, Jeff?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, the last...
And remember, your maintenance stuff is particular by fund and by entity and by subsection what it's in, so some of them, some funds are going to have really small balances versus larger, depending on what, some are by the subsections of some of your general departments, so it's the IT part of nine one one or Public Works or whatever, so some of that stuff can be small, because it's...
Because I think that's what they did, they worked on the computer systems.
I think that's what it was, because that was a lot of expenses when they were upgrading and everything.
Windows ten, I believe.
Now, you can see it on the, you can see it on the expenditures there, which is what you're looking at. So, either those budget items in the, in the budget should have been, uh, should have been adjusted better or estimated better, you know, whatever, but... uh, should've been adjusted better or estimated better, you know, whatever. But, um, I think we give a, a good little overview. Um, you know, especially the payroll expenses where there's been some confusion on that, uh, based on their overtime, because they only have so many people there. Um, those, those numbers should be adjusted to reflect what we, what we have to spend in the budget.
Those were budgeted the same this year as they were last year.
They're the same, yeah, we checked. Those numbers are the same. Like for the overtime expense, it's six thousand.
And then the others, we just had a few other funds on there. Uh, the street fund, I don't know if I can put it all on it. Um, and, uh, we have the utility fund in there too, since that's about the big one.
Uh, that budgeting fifty, a little better, of course. Looks like on the water department, we only expended eighty percent of what was in the budget.
That's good. That can be a little bit misleading because, uh, we always have, there's so many variables and we have a pretty big contingency on that budget, you know, which we hopefully are never have to use, but we have to.
Yeah, she has to.
We have to have that. Cause there is a couple pumps on the night, like, could happen overnight.
Or visual argument failure or something like that, which is very likely to come up.
Jeff, you're near, you normally are in that eight percent range, right? Just because you don't have to, because of the contingency. So that's something that's normally there.
But he can be over that for nothing.
Absolutely.
One thing to notice on the utility fund in the revenue, uh, portion, that's the first page, the utility fund section, uh, fifty-seven. Um, you notice that for that, that you were, you know, quite a bit under the budgeted revenue amounts, the actual revenues. But well, so that is, there's a beginning fund balance in there. So probably most of that is reflected in that. And the other fund that we picked out was the geothermal, for very well, geothermal. Revenue is one page, expenditure is one. There's the last few pages. So, um, that one is actually, so there's a little bit, you got a little bit more revenue from hospital and schools than was in the budget.
Yeah, we kind of picked that one because it had its own revenue. Kind of looked at it. That's the one we paid the loan payment out of, based on the revenue received from USDA.
And that one, obviously the actual expenses are much less than what was budgeted. But that budget does include a capital improvement line item, which you're not gonna use. And some, some other line items in there that you're not, you know, they're in there in case you need them, but you wouldn't necessarily use them.
Darryl, those contingencies again, pay something to solve them.
Well, USDA requires us to keep that, that fund. So we have to put so much revenue into that. So that should continue to grow as the number progresses.
So they're basically fortunate to build any, I guess, condition one. They're fortunate to build any contingency or if something goes sideways, that might be able to cover it. And then, of course, the USDA, you have to replenish it.
So if you'd like reports on, uh, major funds every month or the, just let us know what you want and we'll print it out and have them in the packet every month.
Yeah, cause it'll do all funds. It's about seventy-five pages.
So good reading right there. I guess the bottom line is the town's not broke. Um, if you did look at those funds, what's in the government pool, you got the information back from there, you know. So those balances in that first sheet that come, should be correct.
If you need it. Don't know if we need this, but, but we maybe need to discuss that, yeah.
Maybe quarterly.
We usually did it quarterly before, so unless there's something that comes out, but I can't imagine that.
We'll probably create one monthly, uh, for our own benefit. And if anybody wants to see it at any point, if they have interest, then we'll just discuss it quarterly or something.
All the trees here.
Now, if you do, just make sure myself and council have a copy of it. And then we're updated on everything going on. I don't want it stuck.
If, if we could look at this year's budget, that we talked about with three years of actuals and then by year, I'd really like to see it. Well, we can put the actuals in now. Um, these are not the ones we have today. These aren't audit figures, but they're the best we got.
The most recent completed fiscal year, personally, so it's possible that some things in the wrong spot, but it would still be pretty low.
But give us a better idea of where we are with that budget and if we can do things like satellite for public works and everything else without worrying and not being able to fill the bill. That's, that's a big concern.
Okay, we can do that. And put the correct, we can put the correct projected revenue in there. I mean, if they need to pay the way we are.
At least check them to make sure they're, they're where we need to be and that we can move forward and trace some things down.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on down to public comment period. Uh, since major council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda, I would expect the council and others attend us. Please land your comments to three minutes. Please state the name and address for the record. So if you have any public comments.
Hi. Um, I'm Ginger Casto and I reside at two twenty-eight North J Street here in Lakeview. And first of all, I'd just like to say I really appreciate you guys for hanging in here and doing some really good work to get to the bottom of where you are with your finances and all of that. But I do have some, I have a couple of concerns and that's what I wanted to address. And I wrote it all out so I could read it so I wouldn't get off on a tangent. And so hopefully I'll be under the three minutes, but we'll see how I do here. So, um, I already stated my name and address. I'm a board member of the Lakeview Community Partnership and, which is a Main Street program, and the chairperson of the Alger Theater Committee. LCP provided two letters to the mayor and town council as directed regarding the town lodging tax funds. Mayor Turner remarked at three council meetings regarding the LCP's request for partial funding of an executive director that it was not an appropriate request under the ORSs from the state of Oregon. Further, Mayor Turner referred, referred to an email he received from Wendy Johnson at the League of Oregon Cities that Wendy had stated the request was not allowable under the ORSs. This information was repeated by Mayor Turner several times over several meetings I attended. As you are all aware, Mayor Turner's email to Wendy Johnson and her response are a matter of public record, although Don Lapore stated at one of the meetings when Councilwoman Nikki Taylor was going to refer to the email at a town council meeting for clarification that the email was not to be made public, that the email was private. Councilwoman Taylor then stopped her statements regarding the email and put the email away, while indeed the email is a matter of public record. I was interested specifically what Wendy Johnson might have stated in the email to Mayor Turner, as I had been in communication with Wendy over the last eighteen months regarding the lodging tax ORS information, so I could educate myself about what these tax revenue dollars could be used for in our commit, our community. First as a member of the disbanded lodging tax committee, and then as a citizen of Lakeview, and also engaged in a nonprofit that provides some services considered to be tourism. I first contacted Don Lapore and requested a copy of the email. She stated she needed to check it out, which was reasonable. I spoke with her, uh, after I spoke with her, I contacted Wendy Johnson at LOC who immediately remembered our conversations over the last several months. I explained what had happened in the town council meetings and quite frankly, she was taken aback and concerned, as in her position as an intergovernmental relations specialist, she may not, cannot give advice about what is appropriate or not appropriate regarding such matters. In fact, those questions are legal matters and to be determined by the governing body that is making decisions about those ORS rules and regulations and their legal counsel, which would be you as the mayor, the town counselors, and Jeff Hedlund as your legal counsel. During our conversation, Wendy immediately sent me the email exchange with Mayor Turner. Later that day, Don Lapore provided me a cut and paste version of the email. On several occasions during a town council meeting three or four weeks ago, Mr. Hedlund mentioned to the council and Mayor Turner that the LCP request for executive director funding, that it did fall under the ORSs as something that could be funded, but that you as a council would have to make that decision. This was in response to Mayor Turner's continued rejection of the LCP request as not being appropriate. I have the email from Wendy Johnson and she specifically states, and I quote, "I cannot provide legal advice and you should consult your city attorney on whether a distribution to LCP is lawful under the seventy percent restricted part. However, I note that the organization may be a tourism promotion agency and thus could qualify as a tourism promotion." End of quote. She goes on outlining the process the town could take to enter into contracts with various entities that could be recipients of this fund. In the very last paragraph of her email, before her three or four pages of the ORSs that would clarify Mayor Turner's question, she states, "We highly recommend that you discuss planning lodging usage with the community with proper noticing, et cetera, and that you work with your city attorney. We also recommend you reach out to Orla and talk with them before final decisions as they are a key partner and have sued communities for misuse of tax revenues. Good communication is the key. I hope this helps." End of quote. I'm here today to ask you as the mayor and the town council, have you been transparent? Have you adequately noticed the community about the lodging tax, act, tax application process? And have you developed reasonable guidelines that follow the ORSs and fit the needs of our community in providing a much needed resource for the economic health of Lakeview? I've spoken with four Main Street programs throughout the state, Albany, Astoria, Klammer Falls, and Brookings. All of these programs receive lodging tax funding for staffing, tourist promotion, and travel guides, advertising, and projects to beautify their downtowns. I'm disappointed that your public comment portion of your agenda is at the end of your town council meeting. I believe there are residents of our community that have good information, legal facts, and concerns that could be helpful in your deliberations regarding your work as a town council. I would like to suggest possibly moving your public comment section of your agenda to the forefront of your meeting to accommodate hearing your constituencies prior to your decision-making process. I realize you have work sessions where citizens can listen and have input. However, a more transparent and broader notification process for your town work session notices and town council agendas could provide more engagement and better communication. I realize there's been emergency situations and unusual circumstances in the last few months that have derailed this process and others. However, I expect as an active and engaged community member that you seriously review the legality of recent actions, your transparency and communication style with citizens that attend your meetings, request information, and care about the governance of our town.
Anybody else?
I'm Ann Logan. I'm not a resident of Lakeview, but I am president of Lakeview Community Partnership. I have been to three meetings now on this matter, and you have tabled it three times. As a business owner, and as a golfer, I could be golfing now. But instead, I'm here for the third time and nothing's being done. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your wanting to do it right, but let's get on with the process. And the board signs off on everything that Ginger has said. So please, let's move forward for our sake and your sake and get on with making our town better.
My name's Rhonda Dial and I live at six-ten South Fur Street, we're Animal House. I wanted to read a letter from a friend of mine who had to work tonight and couldn't be here. It's concerning animal control, of course. "To whom it may concern, I have been calling and reporting a neighbor of mine for noise complaints due to their multiple dogs barking, howling, and whining at all hours of the night and during the day even for that matter. But between ten AM and seven AM for over a month. I am concerned that this complaint and issue is not being taken seriously. I'm a law-abiding citizen, buy my own home, working and caretaking for my father. This has been a continuous issue and I have seen police show up, discuss with these people, and only to leave the situation unresolved. I have reached out too many times to count and dispatch can confirm this. I am now in a loss for what can be done. I am more than tolerant of issues arising and understand that things do come up, but this has reached a tipping point. I am very concerned at this point for the well-being of the animals involved and I am curious what I'm able to do moving forward. I'd like some guidance because I have tried handling it, as I know, how, but to no avail. So I ask you, my community, to help me understand why this has not been resolved and what more I can do. Thank you, Stephanie Queston." Now, I wanted to add to that, if I may. I wanted to present the idea that maybe until we get an animal control person, that we could use some of the funding that we have that was voted on or whatever in the budget to hire an already existing sheriff or deputy to maybe spend two to four hours a week. I now have a cage in my car, I have a chip reader, I have places to put animals. I can defray most of the costs that would be involved in starting this up. And I don't mind, as I told you guys previously. If you, if we could get the sheriff, and I'm trying to get ahold of him, but I, this idea is just coming up. If we could get the sheriff to agree to set aside a deputy, maybe four hours on a Friday. Two would be great, four would be better. But I will spend the rest of the week collecting evidence, taking pictures, making notes, so I can give it to that person and they could be the authority there where I have no authority. People ultimately tell me to get out of their yard when I'm trying to deal with these issues of them not feeding and watering their animals out in the beating sun and different things that are really obvious. So I'm just asking y'all to consider, and I know you can't answer me, but next, next, two weeks from now, I'm gonna get on the agenda so... but next, next, two weeks from now, I'm going to get on the agenda, so we can, you know, back and forth. I'm asking you to please consider using some of that animal control money to help, you know, hire an already existing officer just while we get something else in place. Thank you very much. Okay? Anybody else?
I'm Scott Stewart. I was here about a year, it was a year ago in June, and I brought up to the council's attention about the street lights being out. I think there was like seventeen or something at that same, at that time, and half of them are still out. It's not my job to report every street light. I know that PPNL, it's part of the franchise to give those lights, and basically, the public's being ripped off by not having them on. I know that there was an accident right underneath one of those street lights that's been out for a year. I, you know, the fire department have two guys on, I know they have to take the trucks out, run them, you know, maybe somebody could do it in the evening. But, I mean, enough's enough, I mean, a year, and half of them are still out. And also, at that same time, Ray Sleptly brought up about the sidewalks up by the pool. And Ray, you said that holding it off because you couldn't get a contractor and wait till this year. What's happening? I mean, I took my grandkids up there, and shit, they can't even walk on the sidewalk in their bare feet, because it's all tore up. It looks like crap. And my third thing is the weeds. There are so many weeds alongside the street, in the sidewalks uptown, you know, and here we spend, what, a thousand dollars on each one of these advertisements? Lakeview's trying to be, you know, go after the tourism dollar, but the town looks like shit. Pardon me, but that is one thing that Skip Thornton, was his pet peeve, and he used to send his son out to cut weeds if public works department was too busy, or anybody else, but I think that maybe you could get the county correction, the work crew, or somebody. I mean, hell, there's a weed growing up in the steps to the post office, and no one's, everybody's too lazy to pick it up along the library, over here on the, on, next to the bank on E Street, in the sidewalk, you know? T-net, you name it, damn white lumbermans, you come into town, and here's all these weeds. And even trees growing up in the sidewalk, you know, along the curb, excuse me, not the sidewalk, along the curb. It just looks bad, it really does. It makes us look like a second-class citizen. And, you know, it's a shame that people don't have a little more ownership in their yard and what's in front of them. They need, people need to step up. And I believe that there is an ordinance about weeds, you know, in people's yard, over so high. I just coming up here today, just driving down the Main Street, and hell, there's weeds, you know, eighteen inches, two foot tall, in people's yards, coming right through the middle of town, we're going to have a parade here at the end of the month, you know? It, it does look real bad. And I think we need to have a little ownership in this.
Anybody have anything else? Okay?